Yeah, me too.
Was there everybody was good on?
Third and fourth.
The cat.
Morning, once afternoon.
Kathy had some stuff.
Yeah.
I'm okay with either. I put all four out. So whatever works with the greater community. So, no, I don't want to choose. I want you to. Thank you. Since we haven't been at Dennis, are they done? I just drove by. I noticed the lights look great. Along downtown here, changing out the bulbs. Okay. It's closed. They're looking. Yeah, they look close on my way here. I wasn't sure if they were done. So it looks great. That last house is down to about 25%. I saw that this morning. They were actively working that too. I wouldn't be out there as an excavator on that deck, especially with those steel plates. Yeah.
I have 630, man.
I got 629, so.
Oh, there you go.
There we go. Ready, Janine? Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call to order the November 18th Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. And also our guiding principles and the actions that we're about to take. Are we raising the bar in all of our actions? Are we honoring the past but not living in the past? We're building positive connections with our community and outside partners. And is the decision making process building a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community? Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the municipal. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Right. We have a published agenda. Councilmember Warden, I believe you have an amendment for us.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to excuse Councilmember Trenary for personal reasons and Councilmember Deener for work related.
Second.
Got a second. I got a motion by Councilmember Warden, a second by Councilmember Morrissey to excuse Councilmember Trenary for personal reasons. And Councilmember Deener for a work-related absence. All in favor of adding those excusals, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the those excusals have been added to the consent agenda as item K. Are there any other proposed amendments to this evening's agenda? Mr. Mayor, Rose Pepe.
Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Rose Pepe, a second by Councilmember Fenton to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. The agenda has been set tonight. We are to our first citizen comment period. Anyone wish to address the council, please step to the microphone. You'll have three minutes to address the council.
Kristy McGee, I'm here tonight to address recent events and conduct by this council that I found troubling and inappropriate. The ongoing dismissiveness coming from this council is something we've all come to expect. But what I saw and heard here on October 28th was a troubling example of the pattern seeping into the way you interact with one another. It was yet another incident that has become far too common in this chamber, one that suggests ego and dominance are being placed above professionalism and mutual respect. When Councilwoman Fenton was interrupted and spoken over, that moment did not happen in isolation. It reflected a culture that has been allowed to take root here, one that has tolerated personal grudges, power plays, and disregard for far too long. Silencing her while several of you continued discussing the very same subject was disrespectful and sent a clear message to the public, especially to women. I was shocked and could hardly believe what I had seen. You may not have realized it, but your actions demonstrated exactly how women are so often treated. I recognized it immediately because we have lived this dynamic our entire lives, being dismissed, talked over, or treated as less than equal for speaking with authority. Or asserting our perspective, in this case, just for asking a relevant question. Recently, it happened to me as well. A council member publicly mentioned me by name and called me a liar on his official campaign page. And on my own post, in an attempt to silence and discredit me from speaking the truth about an issue I personally experienced with him along with others. This is not professional behavior from somebody elected to serve this community, and I could not ignore the thread connecting these two events. Two women, one elected, one arrested, and both treated as though our voices were irrelevant, unwelcome, and in need of being put in our place. Our city deserves leadership rooted in confidence and integrity, not fragile egos, defensiveness, or authority used as a shield. This council should welcome questions, not silence them, should listen, not lecture, and should take public criticism as an opportunity to do better. It should also be mindful while interacting with each other. The truth is simple. You cannot lead a community when the foundation of our leadership is fractured. And current behavior and actions like these do not reflect strength. The message you are sending is that protecting your own interests matters more than serving the people of the city. The community sees it, and we expect and deserve better. As a citizen, as a woman, and as someone who cares deeply about this place, I'm telling you plainly, it's time to do better. Do you wonder why people come here frustrated all the time? Stop telling us how it is. Start listening. Start understanding. Start engaging in real conversations with the public. And with each other. Reevaluate yourselves and see if the conduct of this council body is clearly working for your citizens, because from this side of the room, it clearly is not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Robert Parker, I come before you tonight. I haven't been here in about seven and a half years, but there was recently. Something that was thrown in my face that I wanted to make you aware of what's happening because you have legal risk. I was on a Facebook page having to do with one of these council members, which is filled with city subjects, which makes it part of the public stage. Maybe you're not aware that there are laws that were passed or court, Court of Appeals cases that were passed back in May of 2024. Councilman Rosa Pepe interfered with my rights to that public stage, removed my names and removed my comments. And I'm now asking the city to go after those public records that he has created online. And for the rest of you to also, if you're speaking on public subjects, it is public record and it should be on record down here at the city. And I'm asking that immediately be restored because that is a violation of my rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council this evening?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Toni Callan. You know me from Port Orchard Politics. Mayors and members of the council. Tonight, I want to speak about a word that should define this body, integrity. Integrity is not a campaign slogan. It's a measure of consistency between what you say in this chamber and what you do when the cameras are off. This community was told that designs could not be changed, yet that was not true. We were told UGA rules forced your hand, yet that wasn't true. We were told homes could not come down for years, yet that wasn't true. We were told transit on the waterfront wasn't a thing, yet that was not true. We were told the train has left the station, and that too was not true. These repeated falsehoods form a pattern, and these are only a few of the many examples that the public has been given. And when these contradictions are questioned, the result is being muted, blocked, dismissed, or publicly belittled in ways that suggest the community simply doesn't understand. By some serving behind this dais. But trust me, our community is intelligent and understands clearly. Integrity means being able to disagree and be questioned without shaming people. It means that when a woman in this community, a woman in the press, or a woman serving on this council asks a legitimate question. She's not mocked, blocked, silenced, talked over, or accused of lying simply for holding you accountable. Or for asking questions you may be unwilling to answer because of the optics. Members of this body have done exactly that. That is not strength. It is the absence of integrity. Integrity is especially owed to the women who serve on this council. They are duly elected by this community and respectful treatment is not optional. When women are belittled or dismissed, whether it's from this podium or from this dais, you send a message that her voice can be discarded at the moment it becomes irrelevant. We deserve people better than select, or we deserve better than selective facts, selective transparency, and selective respect. We deserve a city government whose actions match its words and whose words are rooted in truth every single time. I want to believe this council is capable of integrity. But belief is running low because the evidence is increasingly points the other way for some of you, and the community sees it. Tell the truth, period. No exceptions, no doublespeak, no spin. Treat every resident, especially the women of this community, with the respect you demand for yourselves, your mothers, your wives, and your children. Restore integrity to this chamber, not with apologies or press releases, but with your next decision, your next public comment, and your next vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, please be mindful of the red flashing light. That means your time is up.
Cool.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Shane Hannan. We're in a local small business that supports athletes through, you know, all the way through their college journey, right? So we have eight-year-olds all the way up to pretty much 23-year-olds. They're looking for a place to go play sports and accomplish their goals and their dreams and what they want, right? That's kind of been interrupted by the permitting process and the lack of clarity around that. So over the past several months, worked with the city's permit center on a process that should be pretty straightforward. Instead, it's been super drawn out, confusing, and unnecessarily frustrating process. We had a pre-application meeting back in early October. The goalposts have consistently moved on this project. And the opening of our business has been moved each week. My business suffers. These kids suffer, right, just because of the lack of clarity. To quickly outline our experience, pass that pre-application meeting, wrote down everything possible, tried to get open as soon as possible, right, provide these kids with the chance to go play. Gone back and forth with the permitting center since October 9th, and we still don't have our occupancy permit. We had our inspection yesterday, right? So we're still fighting that battle. There's been three to four comments on our comment response sheet, which has gone back and forth roughly three times. Saying we didn't submit stuff, even when we did, we have a Dropbox to show it, moving the target even till yesterday. We just want a process that, you know, is straightforward, doesn't lack any clarity. It can be super consistent. There can be education around. What we need to do is a small business to go operate, right? I came to this city hall and the permit center for a week straight, right, five straight days. Got told, hey, that's not the right way to go about things. Nothing's available online, trying to educate ourselves the best we can on codes. Put everything in a binder initially to make sure we can open and move straightforward with it, and it just keeps getting confusing, more confusing, and more confusing. As someone needing answers and to work on tight timelines to make sure these kids are taken care of, we went to the permit center every single day. Where the main answer from the front desk or anybody involved was, we don't know the answer to that. Can't find the answer to that. That's above our pay grade essentially, so there's not a lot of unison or any answers that can really be given throughout the entire permit center, right? Lack of accountability makes it nearly impossible to resolve any of these problems when resulting conflicts arise. There's no clear escalation path. And no real responsibility taken. I think the kids deserve that. I think small businesses deserve that, being stunted. Before you can really even start, when we put every dime of my family in this program into this thing, and now we're three weeks late to open compared to the original timeline we were given. It kind of shoots us in the foot right away, and I know a lot of small businesses are feeling that, right? You get stunted before you can even start. So why would businesses even want to start? Why would me as a young person, why would I want to go open up a business in this town, right? It's difficult. We want to support our community. There's a huge hindrance on that when you can't even have a clear-cut process or any formal education around what we need to do. Or when we're told what to do, it just like consistently changes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? All right, we're going to close the first citizen comment period, and we are going to move on to our consent.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to allow the opportunity of the members of online to participate?
Anybody online wishing to address the council, please use the raise your hand feature, and Clark would bring you into the meeting. And I see no one raising their hands, so I will close this first citizen comment period. We have a consent agenda that's been amended. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Go ahead, councilmember.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Rose Pepe, second by Councilmember Morrissey to approve the amended consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We are to our first business item, which is the approval of September 23rd City Council regular meeting minutes. Councilmember Morrissey, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the September 23rd regular city council. Meeting minutes as presented.
I just want, I don't know that you should be the motion maker, so.
That was the one I abstained from that, so. I was absent in October. I was that, that's this one. I was in Indiana. That was that far back. Yeah, yeah, I do want to withdraw that.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the September 23, 2025 City Council regular meeting minutes.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Fenton, a second by Councilmember Morrissey, or excuse me, Rose Pepe, to approve the September 23 council meeting minutes. I believe I'll have one abstention to that approval. All in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And one abstention. All right, the minutes have been passed. We are to item B. Amendments to Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.162, Critical Areas Ordinance. Mr. Bond, this is you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Before the City Council is an ordinance repealing and replacing the city's critical areas code as mandated by the Washington State Growth Management Act. Due to the length of this code section, preparing a repeal and replace ordinance is less cumbersome than presenting an ordinance in red line, as is typical. The council should note that many sections of the critical areas code remain unchanged. Redline versions of the critical area code were previously presented to the City Council at the work-study meeting in October, as well as to the land use committee. Originally, the deadline for completing a review of the critical areas code was December 31st, 2020, 2024. But the state granted an additional year to complete the work. The new deadline is December 31st, 2025. The Critical Areas Code regulates critical areas including wetlands, critical aquifer recharge areas, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. Frequently flooded areas and geologically hazardous areas. The city is required to update its critical areas code together with the comprehensive plan and development regulations according to the schedule found in state law. The Critical Areas Code update consults state guidance and is required to review best available science. The proposed updates include some code reorganization, changes to wetland buffers, and surprisingly, some of the buffers are decreasing. Updated terminology and changes to riparian management zones. The planning commission spent much of the past two years reviewing and discussing the proposed ordinance. Included in this work was the preparation of a comment matrix whereby the city reviewed and prepared responses to each comment received, whether it was from a planning commissioner or a member of the public. And that was provided to the City Council at the work-study meeting. The planning commission held a public hearing on the proposed ordinance in October and voted to recommend approval of the ordinance to the City Council. The staff recommendation, along with the planning commission recommendation, is approval of an ordinance repealing and replacing the Critical Areas Code as presented.
That's my warden.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve an ordinance repealing and replacing POMC 20.162 presented.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Warden, and I believe that was second was by Councilmember Morrissey. Any questions of staff on this matter?
No, I just got a quick question for you, Mr. Bond. I know this also has to do with our growth management and with the wetlands in our critical area. Along with our growth management, do we have anything that talks about the shoreline master program?
So the shoreline master program is authorized by the Shoreline Management Act, which was, I think, approved by the voters in 1970 or 72. It's a separate piece of legislation, and we are required to adopt a shoreline master program, which is a combined. Plan for our shoreline areas as well as the development regulations. That is not scheduled for update until 2029. That is separate from the GMA-based comprehensive plan.
Right. Wow. So it's for a while, but I was just thinking, just, I mean, I could just talk to you later about that. I was just wondering when, if we had that, you know, shoreline master plan.
We will start working on that in likelihood in 2027. It's about a two-year process to go through that and update it. And so the deadline for adoption is 2029, but we'll be working on it starting in a little over a year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions? All right, you'll be voting on the amendments to the Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.162, Critical Areas Ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there one? Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. We're to item C, Amendments to Port Orchard Municipal Code Title 20, Related to Co-Living. Mr. Bond, this is also you.
Yes, thank you. Before the City Council is an ordinance concerning cohousing as mandated by the legislature via House Bill 1998. Cohousing, similar to the Amici House project located in Port Orchard, includes individual sleeping units with kitchens shared among the residents. The city, under state law, is required to allow cohousing as a use on all lots, allowing at least six housing units. The proposed ordinance was drafted to implement the new law and was reviewed and recommended by the planning commission after a public hearing on November 4th, 2025. The deadline for compliance with this ordinance is the 31st of December this year. And if we don't act, state law would supersede our code, but we're taking affirmative action to comply with the new state law. The recommendation is to adopt the proposed cohousing ordinance as presented.
Councilmember Chang.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Title 20. To implement the requirements of House Bill 1998 as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Chang, a second by Councilmember Fenton. Do you have any questions for Mr. Bond? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Bond, I just had a quick question. As I was reading the packet, getting ready tonight, I remember your presentation when you first brought this to us. But I failed to ask, what delineates this? Because everything I was thinking about, thought about apartments slash Amici House. What sets this apart from my neighbor who happens to have? Three different people living in a house together.
I think the distinction is that we've defined sleeping units and it's. A single-family house is regulated as a single-family home regardless of whether the people are related or are a family. We can't distinguish between families and unrelated people living together, and this is a larger scale. I think once you go above six people, you start going into the definition of group home and other types of living situations. And so this is separate and apart for that. It's more like a, almost like a dormitory, or it's a distinct. It's a distinct thing characterized by these individual sleeping units, which are now defined in state law.
So hearing you, it's fair to say that's more a distinction on the. Building and its setup, not its inhabitants. Is that, is that?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, go ahead, Councilmember Warden.
Yeah, when I hear of this, I mean, there is a difference. I understand the state laws requiring it's going to happen regardless. But a four-bedroom home could possibly be eight cars. Right? Whereas a four-bedroom house at my home is three to four cars. So with the Amici House, though, as the example we're using, which we discuss in land use, it's not really. That big of an issue because a lot of them are shipyard workers and they go down and use a foot ferry. They don't need the vehicles as much. But this is in a neighborhood. You are going to have a lot more vehicles in, on the streets. They don't have driveways that that provide the parking that these are going to have. Is there a concern for that?
I think there is a concern, but I think generally the approach that, that. that the state specifically is kind of heading in the direction of is letting the free market determine what parking is needed and that somebody's not going to invest in a building without having adequate parking for that building. And that may mean relying on existing on-street parking where it's present, such as for the Amici House project. But if there was a lot somewhere else in the city where there's no on-street parking, I don't think somebody's going to make an investment in a building where they don't have sufficient parking for the use. But there's always that risk. But I think that, you know, we don't want to require too much parking and make things unaffordable, but we also want to make sure that we have enough, and I think the market does a pretty good job of that.
Councilmember Fenton, you have a question?
Yeah, now, I believe the Amici house is the first co-living that we have in the city, is that correct?
Correct, and it was featured in the guidance from the Department of Commerce on what co-housing is. I think they were involved in lobbying the legislature to make this possible because they have other projects in other cities that they're having trouble getting off the ground.
Yeah, because that was, that was a big, big project. Did we at the city learn to go forward what we learned from that project? So if anybody else wants to do co-living here?
Yeah, I think the one area where it will be a lot easier is the state law requires that you, when you're calculating the connection charges for a co-living unit, the connection charges is reduced, I believe it's either by point, I think it's by half. So a sleeping unit is only half of a residence rather than a full residence, which our code previously didn't make that distinction. And so their connection fees were quite high. But we were able to do, I think, an alternative calculation and I know, and you recall that we got that, I think we reduced it by doing an alternate methodology. But now it will be more prescriptive, thanks to the state law.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, you'll be voting on an amendment to Port Orchard Municipal Code Title 20, related to co-living. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the amendments to the code pass. We're to item D, adoption of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with KPFF consulting engineers for the Frederick reconstruction design project. Mr. Ryan, this is you.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Before you use a resolution for the Frederick reconstruction project, the Public Works Department is advancing design efforts significantly for the reconstruction of Frederick Street, a key connector within the corridor. While originally part of the broader Bay Street reconstruction project, the Frederick Street segment is now moving forward independently. The project will address aging infrastructure, improve multi-modal access, and enhance safety and connectivity for all users. In accordance with the state procurement laws and city policy, we issued a request for qualifications for architectural and engineering service. The RFQ was widely advertised throughout the region. And in August deadline, we received one statement of qualifications through review. KPFF consulting engineers was selected as the most qualified and responsive firm. We've since negotiated a professional service agreement with KPFF in the amount of $312,000, which includes the full scope of design permitting coordination work necessary to prepare for the Frederick Street future construction. This, thank you.
Go ahead, councilmember Warden.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with KPFF consulting engineerings for the Frederick Street reconstruction project in the amount of $312,000.
Second. Motion by councilmember Warden, a second by councilmember Morrissey. So remember, six months ago, we thought we were moving forward with Bay Street and Frederick Street combined in one project because the bank was going to be moving forward on their project, since they're not and that project is being redefined. We don't want to build Frederick Street yet because we don't know where the driveway cuts need to be. But we want to make sure that the infrastructure connecting our new Bay Street to the new community center, you know, all line up and that we're not cutting up our new road at a later date. So that's why, that's why it's important to get at least 60% design of this section of roadway. And then we'll finish it up later and then build that section of roadway when the new project comes forward for the bank site. Cool background there. All right, any questions for Mr. Ryan?
No, the only comment I have, Mayor, would be that I feel like we're playing Tetris a lot with all the moving pieces.
Yeah.
So slowly, but surely, they're all coming together.
Yeah.
I have a quick question, the Daily Journal of Commerce.
It's just where we publish constructs, this is just a common publication that we.
I saw that, okay, all right, I just, I was unfamiliar, not something obviously I subscribe to, but I was just curious. Where is that published and why do we decide to use that?
That is a very common online publishing outlet for major subscribers, for contractors in general that, throughout the region that use this. There's a daily journal of commerce in every city. We use various, we also use our newspaper of record, we post it online.
Okay. And I had seen it and then I Googled it looking for it and the only one I could find was in Oregon and maybe I wasn't looking in the right spot and I was just, I was confused, so.
And they have firms that reach out to local contractors that subscribe.
Perfect, thank you.
If we just advertise in our newspaper of record, we want to cast a wider net to make sure that we get multiple bids when we go out to bid on projects, so. Good question. All right, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with KPFF for the Frederick Street reconstruction design project. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes. We're to item E, adopting a resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on a petition from Kitsap, from Kitsap County to vacate city right-of-way for the city's regular council meeting on December 16. Ms. Wallace, this is you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. So petitioner Kitsap County submitted a petition to vacate city right-of-ways pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code Chapter 12.08. There are three areas being requested to be vacated. They are a portion of an alley off of Taylor Street and a portion of Austin Avenue, that is between Taylor Street and Sydney Street. That estimated street vacation is 9,974 square feet. The section, second portion of Sweeney, can you speak? The second request is for a portion of Sweeney Street off of Sydney Avenue and most of the alley between Taylor Street and Division Street. That approximate square footage is 14,838. The last component is a portion of an alley off of Klein Street, which is between Sweeney Street and Taylor Street, which is approximately 1,498 square feet. The total area requested per vacation is approximately 26,310 square feet. I received a complete application conforming to the requirements of Port Orchard Municipal Code Chapter 12.08, including Section 12.08.010. The Public Works Director and the Community Development Director support the vacation as the city has no current or future plans to open them. Easements associated with the applicable city-owned utilities located within the areas requested for vacation would be provided as a component of this proposed vacation. Port Orchard Municipal Code 12.08.017 and Port Orchard Municipal Code 12.08.050 authorizes the city to obtain an appraisal of the proposed area for vacation to assist the council in evaluating proposed adequate compensation for the proposed vacations. Compensation can include in lieu of transfer of real property as well as a monetary contributions. Following an appraisal, Kitsap County provided a statement of proposed compensations for the areas to be vacated, including the payment to the city of $30,000, the transfer of veterans park, which is approximately 48 acres of real property, which is located in the city limits, and a dedicated public parking on the county's campus for special event parking or an event is sponsored or promoted by the city. A copy of the Kitsap County's proposal to compensate the city is included in the packet for tonight's meeting and cannot be accepted until after the public hearing and associated action by the council, if any. And pursuant to RCW 35.79, that requires the city to adopt a resolution setting a date and time for the public hearing to hear and determine the petition to vacate the city's right-of-way. Based on the city's council regular meeting calendar, staff recommends holding the public hearing to vacate the proposed city right-of-way and accept the associated compensation for the December 16, 2025 council meeting, which is at least 20 days from the date of this resolution, if adopted tonight, that is November 18, 2025. Upon the adoption of this resolution, staff will post proper notices of the date and the time of the hearing and provide notice to the adjacent property owners. With that, staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution setting the date and time of the hearing of the petition to vacate a portion of the alleys and streets as described and directing the proper posting of notices of that hearing. The hearing is to be held Tuesday, December 16, 2025, at the regular council meeting here at the council chambers, 216 Prospect Street at 6:30 PM.
Mr. Fenton.
I move to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing for December 16, 2025 at 6:30 PM on a petition from Kitsap County to vacate a proportion of alleys and streets as described.
Second. Motion by councilmember Fenton, a second by councilmember Rosa Pepe. This is just setting the public hearing tonight and this has been a probably two-year process to get to this point. I'm excited that we're finally moving forward on this. And the, we want to see the county campus built. But step one is for them to build the parking needed to serve their current needs and their future needs. And I want to thank councilmember Morrissey and councilmember Ternary. We had a sit-down with the county administrator and Commissioner Root. And while I think we all said it when we walked out of the room, neither side was completely satisfied with where it ended. So I think it was a fair negotiation. And on page 450 and 451 of the packet is that agreement. And for this right-of-way, we'll be receiving the right to take veterans parks from the county. It's some, someday we would love to have that park, but we need to have a dedicated funding source like a Parks and Recs division within the city that we don't have today. So that gives us 10 years to go to the voters, come up with a Parks and Recs plan. And if we're successful, then be able to take that park from the county, which that park is bigger than all of our parks combined within the city. There's some language in there about the use of that parking lot after hours. And we negotiated, I think, believe it's six events of our, you know, of our major events. And then there's some language about, because the parking lot is going to be fee-based and paid parking and for discounted parking for users after hours. And then lastly, that the county will give us $30,000 in cash for that right-of-way. So councilmember Morrissey, you had your hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for putting together that meeting with the county. I know that this is something that had been ongoing, I think, prior to my arrival here at the dais.
Probably three years.
Okay, yeah, and so I know that there was some frustration on both sides to get to this point. So I would like to urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this. We had some robust discussion and I think this was the best thing that we were going to be able to come out of it. And I think it's kind of a win-win-win for all. There's a little bit of peace that we all would have liked a little more. But you know, we're going to get a great park out of this, it's going to double our park space as well as have some additional parking for some of our signature events here in town. So I think in the end, it was a win for all parties. So because we need unanimous vote here to make this pass, I am urging all my colleagues to get there with me.
And remember, tonight's vote is just setting the hearing.
The hearing, yes.
You'll take a vote on the agreement and and to accept that at the future, after the public hearings, so. Councilmember Chang.
Thank you for clarifying. Will we have the opportunity to discuss the resolution at the December 16 meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
After the public hearing.
Okay, because what I was, this preview I was hearing seemed a little premature.
Yeah, and I just put this in here because I got the agreement from the county. I wanted in the.
I just want to make sure that I could say something about it, but it doesn't have to be tonight.
Correct.
Thank you, okay.
Other comments, questions? All right, we're almost there. So you'll be voting on a resolution fixing the date of a public hearing for on a petition from Kitsap County to vacate city right-of-way at the city council's regular meeting on December 16. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, that meeting date is set. I'll go grab councilmember Warden.
Oh, yes. Sorry, for those of you who are here, councilmember Warden had to step out for that. He works for the county and can't have undue influence.
All right, welcome back. We are to item F, which is the approval of the October 21 council meeting minutes. You can.
I had them mixed up, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the meeting minutes for my work study on Tuesday, October 21, as presented.
Second. Motion by councilmember Morrissey, a second by councilmember Rosa Pepe to approve the October 21 city council meeting work-study minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the minutes have been approved. We're to item G now, adoption of an ordinance accepting the donation of real property, tax parcel number 5392-000-001-0004 from Port Orchard Industrial Park LLC. Mr. Ryan, this is you.
Thank you. The city of Port Orchard recently acquired a parcel near the public works facility from RV Associates Incorporated. Following that purchase, the seller's agent approached the city about a neighboring parcel, tax parcel number 5392-000-001-0004, which is currently used for outdoor storage and includes its stormwater ponds. The property owner expressed interest in donating this parcel to the city. An independent appraisal jointly commissioned by the city and the donor valued the property at $185,000. While the donation comes with no conditions, staff have identified the public works department is well positioned to utilize this site particularly for storage and operational support. Per RCW 35.21.100, council approval is required to formally accept donations of property included in this item are the necessary documents for your consideration. The ordinance of acceptance, the donation agreement, and the statutory warranty and the real estate excise tax affidavit. We believe this donation represents a valuable opportunity to support public works operations at no cost to the.
Councilmember Morrissey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance accepting the donation of real property from Port Orchard Industrial Park LLC.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Morrissey, a second by councilmember Fenton. If, remember, we at one point were considering buying this property, piece of property, and we decided not to. They would have loved to sell it to us. This, you know, the business owner has wound up their business operation. This is their last asset and this provides a tax benefit to them by doing it in this calendar year. So they approached me about donating it to the city because it's adjacent to the building we just bought and provides an opportunity for us to use it, just like they did as a lay-down yard. And it doesn't have a building, doesn't really have anything on it. And it doesn't have any frontage really to a major road. And so great opportunity for us and it provides a benefit to them to, you know, from a tax standpoint. So any questions on this donation, councilmember Rosa Pepe?
No, I just would like to thank RV and Associates because, as I continue to say, nobody's building any more land. And this is a benefit to us in the short term and the long term. So I think it's very magnanimous of them to do that and I'd strongly recommend approval of this.
Just, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to disagree on that. I think it's a liability to us to take on infrastructure upon that we currently aren't maintaining our own stormwater ponds throughout our city. Drive around our city and I look at our ponds that we currently have and we're not maintaining those. We're not, we are not, absolutely not holding up to any NPDS permits. I drive around, I look at it and I wonder, where's our stormwater fees going? Where are they actually going to? And here we're taking on a parcel that we don't have the dollars to maintain it. To say it's free land, it's free land, but it's a liability. And if we have to go in there and maintain that pond, there's no benefit for that. We don't even have the money for that. To take on a parcel that's not giving us anything but a little bit of storage, we just bought a piece of property that tripled the size that we currently have. Our stormwater infrastructure, we don't need discharge into that. If we discharge into it, we still discharge into it, they can't change the flow. We don't benefit at all by taking on this parcel. It's free land, but it's just not free to the standards that needs to be kept up to. And we do not have the staff, we don't have the dollars, that's for sure, to maintain it. If we did, our neighborhoods and the ponds in our neighborhoods would look a lot better. So I disagree. I'm going to vote no on that. I'm going to vote no on that.
Brian, do you want to address any of those concerns? Or I know that we do direct discharge the property we bought.
And we and we would still discharge into it. They cannot, an existing discharge, they cannot stop that.
All right. Other comments or questions? All right.
What does Dennis Ryan, do you have anything to kind of add to help us to learn a little bit more about that?
As far as our staffing levels or our operations, so currently this council just approved another additional stormwater position. That'll bring us up to three with the twenty twenty-six budget. We will bring back an additional position that will be staffed. I'm sorry, that'll be refunded in twenty twenty-seven. So we are continually to build the program. We are definitely, as I told you many times, working on our level of service. There's definitely always room for improvement in every aspect of everything we do.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. All right. You've been over here.
Okay, Councilmember. Not not to digress, but I did hear about the issue of stormwater in neighborhoods during the current cycle. And there was a resident who actually posed the idea that the city should take on more of the stormwater, stormwater detention ponds that are currently private but not being maintained. So I think I think, no, I I
I will comment on that.
Okay.
So this one's unique because we are partial owner to the stormwater pond. So and we are ultimately the enforcement agency that has to inspect it and enforce compliance, and that's something that we're building up to. It would be a burden on the city to take all the private stormwater facilities in in the city. Prior to nineteen, I think ninety-nine, a lot of counties, a lot of cities took everything. And it's it's not, it's it's taxing on any organization.
I'm just passing along what I heard. This particular individual suggested the cutoff point of twenty ten. I think she's saying after twenty ten, and I thought, well, I'll pass it on. You know, I couldn't promise anything. But I think I think this is a valid concern about the the maintenance of the stormwater ponds.
All right. We'll, we have a motion and a second before us to for an ordinance accepting the donation of real property and from Port Orchard Industrial Park LLC. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and those against?
Nay.
So that passes three to two. All right, we're to item H, adoption of an ordinance pertaining to Port Orchard, to downtown parking lot number one, amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Sections ten point one-two, point five hundred, ten point one-two, five-ten, and ten point one-two, five-twenty. And this is you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you. As the Marina Pump Station project nears completion, the city is preparing to reopen Lot One. The city-owned parking is located between Orchard Street and Frederick Streets for public use. In response to feedback from downtown business owners, staff are also proposing to restart the monthly merchant parking pass program, which was in place prior to the lot's closure. The program would reserve a limited number of stalls in Lot One for merchants who would purchase a pass, helping ensure that they have access to nearby parking. The proposed ordinance would reopen Lot One for four-hour parking, public parking, with designated stalls for thirty-minute loading, unloading, and merchant pass holders. Establish a thirty-five monthly, thirty-five-dollar monthly merchant parking pass with eligibility and rules consistent with the previous program. Allow contractor parking to be used in Lot One, excluding the thirty-minute stalls. Include enforcement on Saturdays to preserve merchant access during peak business hours. A map of Lot One is included in your packet and will be added to the city's public parking map online. And additionally, Mayor, I think there was an additional proposal for tonight's.
I'll speak to that.
Okay, I didn't want to miss that, but that's all I had, so.
Okay. And before the motion is made, I'd like to speak this because we can either add that to the main motion or as an amendment. But I spoke to Bob Hampton at the West Bay Center, and I don't know if anybody else has noticed the the parking problem with vehicles camping overnight along the curb at Etta Turner Park. And Bob is asking that we put four-hour parking limitations on on that curb along there so that we don't have people living in their cars, you know, in the shopping center there. So which which butts our park. So we've got the park there and an easement along there. And so we have the ability to enforce that, so.
How do we go about adding that?
I I think I think Mr. Morrissey's got got this one though, so go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt in an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Sections ten dot twelve dot five hundred, ten dot twelve dot five-ten, and ten dot twelve dot five-twenty. And adding on the curbing along Etta James Park for four hours as well.
Okay, and it's Etta Turner Park.
I'm sorry, yes.
All right.
I said Etta James, I'm thinking of the same.
You sure. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Morrissey, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe to the pass, to make the changes that are in our packet and also add four-hour parking restrictions to the curb along Etta Turner Park. Any questions up yourself or Mr. Ryan?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I got I got some questions here for, now, when you say Lot One, is that across, is Lot One across from Josephine's?
It's.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't say here Lot One, so.
Yeah, it's.
Where's Lot One?
It's the it's the lot that was just reopened around the pump station.
All around it.
Okay, all the brand new ones there.
Yeah, there's there's three rows of parking there.
Uh huh.
And the, if you're standing here at City Hall facing the water, the top left corner are going to be the thirty-minute parking stalls for the boaters. The rest of those remaining two rows will be four-hour parking. And then the back row, we're going to make available, there's seven stalls, I believe, for the merchant passes. And so as of tomorrow morning, we'll be equipped to issue merchant passes. There'll be monthly passes to the business owners and their employees for thirty-five dollars a month if they if they wish to purchase one of those.
Right.
And they will be on a first-come-first-served basis. And there's some restrictions on when you've got to arrive to to get that stall.
That's my next question, and I'm glad there were seven because I I didn't read how many stalls we had on here. Now, I I don't really understand this or get it because it says at the end, rules. So this is the very last paragraph on page four eighty-eight. Rules to add a rule for the downtown merchant parking pass program, including that the dedicated stall shall be available on first-come-first-served basis until ten A M. After which time, any vacant stalls may be utilized by the general public subjected to the four-hour time restriction. What I'm not getting is if a merchant pays thirty-five dollars a month, but what happened if their their shift is later, but they don't get there at ten A M? So how is that available to the merchant?
This language is the language we've had for the program previously. We can change it if you guys chose to. But the spaces are first-come, first-served, and those stalls, and when we've had this program in the past, we rarely have one merchant, if if any, that will take it to take advantage of the program. So if we didn't allow for the, so after ten A M, anybody can park there with a four-hour restriction. And so now if we didn't, otherwise we would have stalls that aren't being utilized at all. So with this program, you you it's first-come, first-served. And you can't, so John can't show up to park and park in that row at eight o'clock in the morning or nine o'clock. Anytime before, anytime before ten o'clock, the general public can't use those stalls. After ten o'clock, if somebody isn't parked in one of those stalls, then they're, those stalls are open up to the general public to use.
It will just, I I find it will just kind of be interesting if a merchant is paying for those stalls. But yet if they come later and they're all taken, then it's they're kind of a waste of money for them.
Yeah.
I don't know, it will be interesting to see.
Yeah.
Because this wording is a little different, I mean, for me anyway, when I'm looking at it.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah, didn't I was talking to you one time recently about this. We discussed like four stalls possibly, and if they filled up, we can add a few more to it. Is this the alternative to that?
It was just putting signs on four stalls versus the entire row.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was just these going to be, I I and with this language that after ten o'clock, it's going to open up to the general public. We, I think we can ensure that these parking stalls are going to get used because they're definitely in need for more parking downtown.
I think it's, I mean, it's a very good compromise compared to the two hours that we had and staff couldn't get out to move their vehicles. So it's a, it's it's a real good start.
Yeah.
It's a real good start.
Even for four hours, it's hard for a merchant to get out because of their, you know, their shift.
There is a price to doing business too.
That person that had a shift at two o'clock, and if they parked in any of our part, four-hour parking down there, parking enforcement goes home at four thirty. They're probably shh.
Hey, thanks.
Councilmember Rose Pepsi.
No, I'd just like to remind the council that we can make a decision and then change it if the conditions do that. I would agree with the information that we had before that this was not being utilized. And so this does make, it's a nice compromise right now. So I would I'd move forward, but we can monitor it, see what we get from the alliance and what they, comments they have.
Councilmember Chang.
I'm sorry, I missed how many were in the row. Did you say six?
Seven, there's seven in the merchant row, and it's either three or four are set aside thirty minutes for. And they're already signed that way down there.
So I I think it's a good start because it does provide parking for merchants. I will bet you though that merchants in the eight hundred block of Bay Street are not going to walk walk one block here to park their car, but would rather complain as they have. It's unfortunate, but at least we're providing someplace for them to park. I do actually have a concern about the amendment, which is changing the hour four-hour parking along Etta Turner Park. I I realize that is city property and it's next to Bob Hampton's private property. And I know he's abolished stall parking or he's trespass people on his property. And I I would, I have actually walked there with my dog and I've seen a couple of trucks parked there. And I've, I've been aware that there are people probably sleeping in their trucks overnight. They are, I would say, not dangerous. They seem to be clean. And I would actually hate to chase people away from what's considered safe parking, unless we have someplace else where they can go, and I'm not sure that we do. So I will vote against the whole thing if we're including that clause.
How do they get in and out, without using private property? They can't.
They can't. I know that, I know the answer, sorry. I was just trying to get into things through that. I I I just don't see how we couldn't not help our property owner there. Because how would somebody get out i- in an emergency that the parking lots is?
They're not blocking anyone from his parking.
I I hear you. I I think the issue is that there's a covered space there as well. Well, not for the parking, but I I believe there are just, it it has become a homeless attraction right there, as I've visited that business and had issues trying to park to to frequent the pizza place, as well as the people that were set up camp there and under the covering there.
Yeah, I haven't seen the camp. I've only seen the two trucks and they stay inside their truck. They don't expand, they're tidy, so.
Actually, they have been, there's they're stretching tarps out into the parking lot.
Well, we're not talking about riding here, we're talking about Etta, Etta Turner Park.
I I am referring to, yeah, there's tarps being spread between the two vehicles to. But anyway, that's here then there, and we have a motion and a second on the table related to adoption of modifying the parking on Lot One and also adding a four-hour provision to the curb along Etta Turner Park. All in favor of those changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Okay, passes four to one.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we continue on, item G, the donation, because that was a three-two vote and it was an ordinance, not a resolution, that did not pass. So that needs to, it has to pass by a majority of the membership of the whole understate law. So that needs to be brought back for a future meeting when you have more council members.
Okay.
Unless council wants to reconsider it tonight.
Okay, all right. So we will bring that back to our next council meeting. All right, so we are, we have no discussion items this evening. We have council committee reports. Let me find those, economic and development and tourism. I don't believe you you met, December eighth, I see is your next meeting. Did, has utilities met since our last?
Nope.
I see December ninth is potentially your next meeting date. Finance was scheduled for this evening and it was canceled. We didn't have any agenda items. Transportation is November twenty-eighth, I see. I don't believe it's met since our last council meeting.
I don't think so.
I'm getting blank ears.
No.
Right.
I I believe that to be correct. Land use, I see is is tomorrow, yes. Lodging tax, we know that's.
We met.
You met?
We did.
You have a report.
Oh, yeah, well, a short one. So we had our first meeting would have been last week. I don't remember which day, but we had a majority of our committee there. It was our first meeting, setting out when our future meetings will be, what we're looking at and getting our RFP out. And it has been published. So if you know anyone looking for tourism, marketing, or operation dollars, please send them to the city website to submit their proposal. And we will meet again either December third or fourth. That will be published probably sometime tomorrow or later this week. That is my report. And we have some new members, and we'd like to thank them for serving.
Okay, well, who are those new members?
So we have Pat St. Laurent is one of them. I don't have my list in front of me. Can the clerk help me? Because now he's going to put me on the spot, I'm not going to remember who.
We have Pat, who is a Airbnb, Shelley, who owns two Airbnbs on Bay Street. And then we have Annette, who owns.
But they were, that was our only two.
They weren't there.
Right, and then we also thank.
John with.
Lorraine Olson.
Yep.
For her many years on our lodging tax committee, and last year was her last year, so she is not back this year. That now concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. Stuart Visery, have you met?
No, we don't meet again till February.
Okay. And I've got something in outside agencies, but I'm going to give it to my mayor's report. Copy with council, anything to report there?
Yes. Do you want to start or should I?
I was there for about ninety minutes of it because of Beck's funeral afterwards. But the one person that we talked to, we talked to was mainly about the multi-taxi. Multi-family tax exemption, which is a discussion. I think that turnout was a little bit low because of the weather. That was pretty nasty morning. And then I think Fred had some to add, talked to a couple of people afterwards.
Yeah, a couple, someone came at the very last minute, and so Mark and I stayed and talked to her. She was a resident of the trails. I believe her name was Jackie, and she had two questions. The first one was she was advising a business called, I think, Wine About It, that apparently didn't understand the permitting process, which we have heard before. And so we asked this advisor if she knew more about the situation. For example, did the tenant hear the words move and ready from the landlord? And were they already paying rent? And the answer to both was yes. So we suggested that in an ideal world, the applicant would talk to permitting before they sign a lease, find out what needs to happen in his face. We told her that there was one business, for example, that's selling food in what used to be a shoe store. So there had to be modifications when you're adding heat and ventilation.
Fire suppression and.
Okay.
Nature.
And so she understood that, and then she had a second issue, which was in her neighborhood, she said they noticed that there was a household that seemed to be taking care of people that were just, she wasn't endangered by them, but she didn't know what was going on. So we suggested that she contact planning and find out if they, if this was like a congregant living housing or something. And to let us know what she heard.
All right. So we will move on to, I think, the next item is the, find my agenda back here. So reporter of the mayor. Reporter of the mayor, that's where I thought we were. All right, Brandy, can you share those slides? So I serve at the Petersham Regional Council's transport executive board and also on the transportation policy board. And Brandy's kind of, so there's some data that I thought, so that came out of a presentation related about to future transportation funding needs. Okay, so you're aware that we have a transportation improvement plan. And if you add all of the. And if you add all of the uh transportation improvement plans of the Pigeon Sound region together, uh, you would find that over the next twenty-five years, there is a fifty billion dollar shortfall uh to fund all of those projects. And sixty percent of that need of those needs are in the city, the county and the state. And so, so that, that total includes the state's projects uh also. So uh in, in that, in that presentation though, I just, I found it interesting that our median household income has actually surpassed Pierce County. Um, and I don't know how recently, but it has. And I know we've got the, the Bainbridge, I, Bainbridge Island factor to Kitsap County that uh discutes it a little bit. And Brandy, if you want to uh go to the next slide, and then also our median house price is actually eclipsed. It's the second line there, Pierce County, we're at five oh five. Um.
That happened in April of twenty twenty-four, by the way.
Well, did it? Okay. So John knew exactly when that happened, but uh it's the first time I've seen data that shows that. And then the next slide, uh, this is the cost of the, the, you know, we've got a transportation benefit district here in Port Orchard that we're funding Bethel with, in Kitsap County, all those as a whole. We've got the three cents measure pending our fast ferries. But if you look at our tax burden, comparison to the other counties in the Pigeon Sound region, it's significantly less when it comes to transportation taxes. And it's a variety of factors, but one of the biggest is the sound transit initiative, um, is, is uh, is bringing that up higher in those, in those other communities. Um, but I just, just thought, I found that, that data very interesting. And so, and if Brandy, if you go to the last slide, uh, is, just really shows if things like a road usage charge or other things are considered. And so uh transportation uh chair, Representative Jake Fai was at the meeting and, and uh, he was speaking to how last year when they ran that measure related to a road usage charge, that, that two thousand people speak against it and, and a hundred speak for it. And so he's not planning on running a bill in this session. And, and I shared with them though, if sixty percent of the needs is in local government, and would the state be, would they consider in a road usage charge, a different split than what we're currently seeing in taxes? And, and he gave me a very long-winded answer that really, but it really led me to believe, me to believe, no. And I did, I shared with them, well, if you're not, how, how can you expect local government to support you and your endeavor? If you're not going to share those resources where there's the biggest need. And he didn't have a good answer for me, but I just wanted to share that conversation. Um, you know, we're doing, you know, while it, um, no one likes our impact fees, it's, it is growth pain for growth. Takes a long time for us to collect enough impact fees to uh, to do a project that, uh, you know, our Bethel phase one, we should be, you know, close, if not entirely funding that with local dollars from our transportation benefit district and from our traffic impact fees. So um, just want to share some of that.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
Yeah, um, for outside agencies, don't you attend like two meetings a month for Kitsap Transit?
Oh, I do. We had one this morning.
Yeah. Is there, I mean, we have, in two years, I haven't heard like an update. Is there ever anything to update on?
You know, you know, we had one business item.
Not sure how interesting it is, right?
Yeah.
I don't tune in to watch it, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, we had one business item today and it was their salary survey, uh, uh, which we do there every two or three years. So it's pretty benign. Um, I would say the director's report, it was probably the most interesting thing was in the director's report. Um, and it had to do with, you know, where the West Park bowling alley was. Okay. They've got a big parking, so long-term, they're going to demolish that. And there's a project, proposed project to build, build a hydrogen electrolyzer there, which is going to be many years in the making, but there are a hundred parking stalls there. And they're gonna uh use those parking stalls for a park and ride lot and create a, a bus route going down to the ferry terminal. So that was probably the most interesting thing, the salary survey.
Otherwise, it's curious. Like, there's something like regarding the Sea of Port Orchard, you know what I'm saying? Cause I'm thinking like, you guys attend those meetings every month and I've never heard that. I keep saying I'm going to ask and I just keep forgetting to ask about outside agencies.
Ask anytime.
But I was just curious, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Super Tuesday is the first Tuesday of the month when all of the policy boards meet back to back, back help nine-one-one, transit, and I'm, and KRC. And you guys came to the legislative reception and by and large got, I'll be the chair next year of KRCC.
Yeah.
And yeah, but we rotate those responsibilities.
Okay.
Kind of along those lines with um council member, um.
Eric.
Eric. Cause I was at the first meeting of the month and at the very end, I remember um John um Clausen's um said that, and it was in the budget for two diesel buses and how many electrical buses? And you guys all said, yes, but there wasn't a, a number, or there was no cost to it. So I was kind of curious, how many?
Off the top, but I can't remember. Uh, but the buses run a million dollars apiece, uh, roughly. Uh, electric buses slightly more expensive than a diesel bus.
Yeah.
I know that the, uh, yeah, they were replacing some electric, replacing electric buses and a few diesel buses.
I remember two diesel buses, but was like five electric. I, I just thought it was like a lot. And then I, a price didn't come with it. So I thought, I, that was the question. So I'm glad you just brought that up. Cause it'd be kind of interesting because that's all of us paying for those.
Yeah. I'm sure the minutes are online.
They are.
Yeah.
And largely the buses are paid for from federal sources and with a local match.
Yeah. So. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Uh, so that concludes my report. Uh, and department heads, and Mr. Ryan, anything to share?
Uh, thank you. I'll be quick. I have quite a bit. Um, so I did want to update everybody. I know council member Fenton, you brought up the Bay Street, Harrison, Rapid, Rectangular, Flashing Beacon, Crosswalk. We did hear from the state. They, they took the second one down because they have to recalibrate in the new parts. They're hoping for those new parts to be here within the next week or two. So we're really hoping they're here soon. Um, Baywater, uh, I'm sorry, Bay Street over water structures, they're just about a hundred percent gone. So I, we were expecting them by the end of the week to be wrapping up and getting close to demobilization. So that, uh, really happy with that contractor. Um, Givens Park, we have a dedication set up. Uh, the work is complete a hundred percent by the contractor. They met all their scope requirements. Uh, we are doing some operational improvements now. We did some uh reshape the bank. We're planning some kinnik-kinnik and uh we, we decided to add a uh fence just for the slope of the embankment. Uh, that's going to happen this week and we are going to ready to utilize that park once we do the ribbon cutting. But I won't tell anybody, there was a young person in the dark out here playing under the lights tonight. So it was good to see.
Right.
Um, I want to keep you up to speed on the Sydney trench. Uh, we are having.
Back up to the park. Are you going to talk about the hours?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. So our current barcode is dusk till dawn. That could be problematic with pickleball in the summer. So uh, we would like to recommend that council would consider in the future changing the rules ordinance for Givens Park to perhaps our, to mirror our noise ordinance, which is seven to ten PM. Otherwise, you're going to have people playing at five o'clock in the morning next to houses. So if that's something I'm getting ahead of nod to bring forward, we'll, we'll bring up future.
That'd be seven AM to ten PM for sure. So, cause there's lights there. Somebody could be there at midnight.
It's loud.
Black in the pick, pickleball.
Okay. We will bring that in the future when daylight stays times over.
Yeah, Director Ryan, I just, it's a perfect time for me to interrupt and, and say, hey, everybody's invited to our ribbon cutting. We're super excited to finally get this going. I know my Rotary Club's super excited. We threw some money at the project. So uh, next Monday.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock. So hope to see everybody there.
It for sure is happening. So um, the next thing, so Sydney, uh, we have two separate uh contractors working. One is the city's multimodal improvement. That is ACI. We also have a.
Just a second here, David. So he's referring in front of Sydney Glen Elementary on Sydney.
Yep. So we're, we're having issues. Uh, there's a private development going in. They have a trench failure occurring with their compaction. They've, uh, we're out there every day requiring them to come to fix the potholes. Our staff has mobilized to fix those potholes. We have sent them a bill for what it cost us. Um, we're tracking our time. But we are working on enforcement with our inspectors. Uh, there are next steps that they are going to have to give us their updated compaction testing and likely have to consult with the geotechnical engineer for remedy. So we're all over it, but um it's not the desired outcome that we're wanting to see out there.
Yeah, that road's a mess right now and we're, we're trying to force compliance of the contractor. We hope we don't have to go after their bond. Councilmember?
The elevated sidewalk by the school.
Mm-hmm.
Is there going to be a fence put alongside that? Is that slope steep right now?
I, I will check.
Yeah. It wasn't, there was a path there.
Something. Cause that, that's deep right now. It wasn't previous, but right now it's.
Yeah.
It's pretty steep.
I, I'm sure there is because the same uh engineer that's recommended it for Givens Park is uh working on that project. So.
Yeah.
I will double check. Um, so that's where, that's it. We're the trench. On Friday, I sent an email to the entire council. Our staff, uh, actually our office staff smelled a strong smell. We had staff, staff walking around. We saw a sheen. We started following the sheen. Uh, wasn't coming from vehicles, bubbling on the ground, uh, was a uh non-commissioned diesel heating oil tank. So our operations crew was responding. Our uh, um, our fog, fats, oil and grease inspector was out. We had ecology working closely with them. The business owner was extremely cooperative. They purchased the building. It wasn't disclosed. Um, all parties worked together. The, the resident listened to some good advice that staff gave her about giving the remediation tanker truck out there to clean up, decommission the tank, because we didn't know if it was cracking. Ecology was extremely pleased, but the sheen did hit Sinclairian land. The, our manager of ecology was out there with the boat. There's also a sunken boat out there that there was a sheen that they're working on that. So they had their hands full, but um it was a good cooperated coordinated effort. That was a quick response. So. And the last thing I have is I want nobody to forget that we are still working on foster. We've had some.
Sign a lease and then find out that they have tens of thousands or even a hundred thousand dollars in improvements that need to be made uh for a change of use. So uh, uh, thanks uh to all the departments who worked on this. I know Noah's department was uh heavily involved, the building folks, and then Josh, uh, our communications, uh, staff person helped out with this as well. And too much, I know Angela sent you and I an email of one of these meetings that transpired here this, this last week and how productive it was and how prescient the business owner was. So I, I really encourage everyone that's planning on opening a small business and leasing a space, using this tool and uh engaging with us ahead of signing the lease. Cause nothing worse than making payments on a space they can't use. Um, because you're, you're working through the permitting process. Yes, we've been offering those meetings for a couple of weeks now and we've had some uh mostly uh good feedback. I think um two or three people have said how helpful it was and that they're glad they didn't sign a lease before um uh understanding fully what would be required.
Can we have a Facebook post on it too with that? Can we have a Facebook post on it too, directing people to that link?
Yeah, we will, um, we will get something up in the next few days. Um, we'll, we'll have that. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Director Bond. Uh, what a great addition to our city's website, uh, and a, a great tool for uh business in our community. So uh, thank you for putting the time and effort and putting in that. What is the expectation for an SLA around somebody who puts in a request for that? Um, I, I, I know just for instance, when I moved uh my business uh into the county, uh, the, the county had a expectation that within forty-eight business hours, you should be able to have a, like a, I, I can't remember if it's a fifteen or a thirty-minute time slot to just have an initial conversation. Uh, they weren't putting any type of expectations that I'm going to have everything I need out of that meeting, but um i- i- is it pretty timely?
We, we are aiming to be able to offer one to two of these meetings per week. Um, right now, assuming that people aren't on vacation or otherwise out of the office for that week. Um, once we hire uh the position that you funded, which was a um plans examiner, inspector three position, so a very senior inspector right below the building official, we may be able to take on more of these types of requests. Um, but we have to fill that position first. Right now, there's, but there's quite a bit of a backlog and uh it's, it's hard to, to get any time with anyone in our building department because we are so slammed.
Would, would you just keep us abreast of that so that we can make sure that we're allocating the appropriate resources?
Definitely.
Thank you, sir.
We have that job posted. And it's kind of an awkward time to be hiring through the holidays, but uh, uh, we'll see what kind of response we get uh here in the next few weeks uh to that and we'll report out.
I actually called nothing.
He asked me that question earlier today. So go ahead, sir. Dennis reminded me, I, I had uh another thing on my list, which I, I couldn't figure out where I saved it. Um, I did want to also report that we, we have been um trying to figure out, uh, you know, why, why things are so busy this year. We, we have run some reports through our permitting system. And as of November first, uh, the number of permits that have been assigned to our public works department are up twenty percent. And that's only through November first. We still have two months left in the year. So we are, we are seeing a significantly higher volume and it is the types of permits that are in are, um, are, more of them are being routed to public works for review. And of course, we have one of our engineers who is on active duty and has, has been out of the office since the beginning of the year. And so that has only exacerbated the problem, but we are, uh, we've authorized overtime and are working through that, that backlog right now. But it's been, uh, it has been a year uh for permitting for sure. Now, Miss Bond, you gave that, that number of twenty percent this year, but you gave me a number a week or so ago. Over the last two years, we're up fifty percent. Wasn't that the number that you shared with me in our permit activity? I, I think that was since like twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty. I'd have to go back and look. Okay. I thought the couple of year period were up significantly. The, and so we're at, we are adding staff. We're, we're trying to get to, get on top of it. So. Ms. Robertson, our guest attorney, you're not Miss Archer as the name tag says, but.
No, she'll be back at your next meeting. I have nothing to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Chief, what do you have for us?
Uh, just a couple of things. So we did publish out our twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty uh plan. I might want to specifically call out Caroline Everhardy, who did all the work to make it look pretty. Cause I can work with Microsoft, that's about it. Uh, but also to thank members of our staff, community and this body that also took the time to sit down with me uh and really kind of helped us develop that out. Cause it is a, a guidebook for us for the next five years. Um, it's available online through the city website. And if you, anybody wants a hard copy, if that's easier for them, they can certainly reach out and provide that. Uh, an update on derelict vessels. So I want to give a shout out to Sergeant Trey Holden, who is the supervisor of our marine services unit. We had about fifteen derelict vessels out about a month ago. And they have stayed on top of the vessels they can. I'm happy to report that uh thirteen of them chose to leave voluntarily. Uh, and we have two that are apparently under abatement. Um, that's exclusive of the two larger vessels that the Coast Guard has a hold on while they are working with the vessel owners to get them uh seaworthy so they can uh leave and go, I believe, to the Philippines. And then in front of you, I provided you with uh a recommendation memo from the um Kitsap County abandoned, abandoned derelict vessel program was something that was started in twenty twenty-four. Um, state, local agencies, um, and feds. Um, state, local agencies, um, and feds.